Okay, good evening and welcome to the member of board meeting in the Lake Mills Board of Education. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Let's stand to the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert D'Imperio?
Here.
Dan Thomas?
Richard Mason?
Here.
Verification meeting notice?
It was submitted to the Lake Mills leader and posted at the Lake Mills Library, Post Office, and Baker Lake Mills on November 3rd. It was also on our website.
Any agenda revisions?
I would just note that Mr. Vogel wasn't able to attend tonight. He's at the Fall Sports Awards Presentation.
Okay, and approval of the agenda?
I move the approval of the agenda.
Second?
Move to the second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an approved agenda. Committee input?
The LMEA, represented by Brenda Morris, and Tracy Boyd.
Come on down.
Good evening. The Lake Mills Education Association believes the public has a right to know how much funding is taken from public schools to subsidize private education. Each public school district loses aid based on the number of voucher participants residing in their district. Public schools are then forced to cut their budgets by the amount of deducted state aid or to exercise an increase in the levy to recoup the loss. Legislators have drafted legislation, AB 267, which demands that property tax bills statewide report the amount of aid taken away from a homeowner's public school district. Statewide, public school districts lose over $274 million per year. Lake Mills has lost $57,232 to vouchers, which could go a long way towards paying another teacher's salary and reducing our class sizes. In addition, 84% of tuition voucher recipients had already been paying tuition at their private schools when the voucher program was expanded. Only public schools are required to accept and educate all students. In honor of American Education Week, LMEA encourages the Lake Mills Board of Education to pass a resolution in support of the right-to-know legislation at the December board meeting to publicize the issue locally and to build relationships between school board members and local leaders to prevent ongoing increases in the amount of tax dollars being taken from public schools to subsidize private education. We have copies of a sample resolution for you that has already been passed by the Eau Claire Board of Education. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board reports. Mr. Blaze?
All yours.
Stand up.
No, you can do it right here. The fall activities are just wrapping up at the high school. The Fall Sports Awards banquet is tonight, and they have a lot to be proud of and recognize, including the football and volleyball's strong runs in the playoffs and the girls' cross-country team placing third at the state meet. The musical was over this past weekend, and I think the whole cast and crew is very happy about how it went. Every show was just about sold out, and for the Sunday performance, chairs were added to accommodate extra patrons. This Thursday, link crew will be going to a leadership conference to continue to build on collaboration and leadership skill sets. Also this week is the NHS introduction ceremony, which is Thursday night at 7:00. Overall, the students at LMHS have had a successful fall and are looking to continue that throughout this winter.
Good, thank you. I might add that the music was absolutely outstanding, just outstanding. And we have one major participant right here. So, Mr. Temprio, Facilities.
Yes, on the 18th of October, the Facilities Committee met along with representatives of the Myron Company, EUA Architects, Ms. Brockert and Ms. Striker, and Mr. Vogel were in attendance as well. What we did was we looked at and updated our analysis for the master plan as far as major activities. We updated the option summary that we've put together to get an idea about what kinds of things that we can be doing in the future for our buildings. Myron provided a preliminary cost estimate for work here at this building. We understood also that we wanted to get some estimates on upgrades of our athletic facilities, and we contacted the Rettler Corporation, who specializes in athletic facilities as well as site development, and they will be putting together a package for that. All of this is getting ready for our work session next week so that we can share with the whole board the kinds of mischief that we've been up to.
Good, thank you. Dr. Delaney, correspondence?
We've had, we received two thank you notes from Jan Vanderheiden and Mark Ward.
Good, thank you. Ms. Thompson?
Good evening. A couple of updates from the elementary school. On the, our PTO has been very busy as always. They hosted a Lego night last Friday night, which was well-attended. They built a city. For the students, they each came in and got a card to build either a hospital or other components of the community, put it all together in a large table, lots of pictures were taken, and then we take it all down. So they had to take all the different buildings apart. The PTO fundraiser begins today. All of the materials went home with our students for the Hanson fundraiser. Our Veterans Day Assembly was last Friday. Our second grade team put the assembly together, contacted one of our parents who works for the Madison VA to be a speaker at the assembly, and they did an outstanding job, so I wanted to thank the second grade team. Parent-teacher conferences, we are halfway through them. On Thursday night, we hosted the first round of conferences for our parents, and then we'll finish up this Tuesday. It's great to have all of our parents coming to meet with our teachers, talk about student success, and making plans for the rest of the school year. Then finally, I just wanted to give a little bit of a PBIS update. Part of PBIS is helping to support students with all of their academic and social and emotional needs. Some of the things that we're doing this year that are different from years past is that we're working with the county on something called dinosaur school. So dinosaur school is led by two social workers from the county that come in with parent permission, of course, and work with a small group of students specifically on their social skills. We also have, this year, worked with PATA from Jefferson County, and on a program called Hands Are Not For Hitting, represented came into our kindergarten classrooms to do a read aloud, they sing a song together, really talking about the importance of how we treat each other and how individuals should be treated as well. And then, of course, our mindful work is continuing, and that is, we have students that are meeting Monday through Thursday, kindergarten through fourth grade in small groups, and then our school psychologist and our social worker also working with small groups of students across the day for mindful practice along with the counseling sessions that they provide. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bauer?
I'm going to spend the majority of my presentation tonight on our service day. Just make sure that the... So, oh, and I don't have the exact date in my head, but in between this board meeting and last, we had our middle school, oh, it was a day, it would have been October 25th. We had all 500 of our students commit to doing some sort of service around the community. This is just some pictures from that event. I'll try to give you a brief summary of what they're doing as we go through this. So, thank you cards for the police and fire department. They visited several different nursing homes in the area and played games with the residents. They went to laughing dogs and helped, they're reading to the dogs, they can't touch the dogs. Oh, there's their thank you cards to the police department. So there's our kids reading to the dogs. We raked eight different yards, one accidentally. We created, we also made treats for the firefighters and police officers. They worked at several churches throughout the community, helping cut down trees, replant plants, clean up fall things. We did cupcakes for a cause, and there they are making blankets for a thing called Project Linus where they donate the blankets to hospitals, and kids go home with those. There's a lot of pictures of those boys cutting down that one tree. It took, I think, the whole time. They, for, which is night out, they decorated the sidewalks outside the businesses with positive comments for kids. They cleaned up trash around our school building. They created kindness rocks that'll be distributed throughout the community. Oh, they made cards for veterans for Thanksgiving and the holidays. So those are... What you can see there, anyway, are some of the different places that we visited. I'm not sure how to zoom this in and out, so I'll just let you take a look at that for a second. Well, I'll let you know about parent-teacher conferences. We had, I would say, one of the best parent-teacher conferences I've seen since I've been here. We had more parents there. Parents had to wait a little bit longer in line. We do a cafeteria-style type of thing in the gym, but almost every teacher had, at any given time, seven or eight parents waiting to see them. When I asked the teachers, you know, what was the nature of the conference, they said it was just very supportive. It was one of the most positive things they did. And I don't know if you saw my comment in my staff bulletin, but they literally, I couldn't decide, do I give them water so they can continue talking? But I know for the four hours, never people used the restroom. So they really, I think on Friday, everybody was physically and emotionally exhausted, but it was a very successful conference time, so. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have Kale's report?
I do, I could do that, not for you.
Kale's up.
Okay, this is from Mr. Vogel. Congratulations to the entire cast and crew of the musical and the tremendous success this past weekend. A big thank you to all who participated, especially Mrs. Linda Heimstreet and the music department. LMHS hosted another successful Veterans Day program on Friday, and a special thanks to Mr. Herman and the National Honor Society for organizing that. The Interact Club, which is the student version of Rotary, have, they continue to work on the food bank, and to date, they've raised over $1,000, and it's now open on Wednesdays from 3:00 to 6:00. And I would add that that is open for any student and their family that wants to come in, and the details can be found on the Facebook page. And then, also at the high school, they're working with PATA, they're working with Linda, excuse me, Heidi Larson. And remember, PATA stands for People Against Domestic and Sexual Abuse. She will be presenting to the students in the months of November and December during advisory, and she'll talk about the purpose of the organization and also detail the services provided. The PBIS team finished up their Tier One implementation training last month, and they'll be going through the steps of implementation with the high school coming up. And then the staff is continuing to work on ACT prep with Ms. Silverood within their departments, and the work is focused on covering and revisiting a number of topics prior to the ACT in February. The Career Tech Ed Department is finishing up their curriculum review cycle, and then there are discussions about class rank and how that plays out at the high school, but there's no recommendation at this time. Again, parent-teacher conferences are again on the 14th, and then sports are starting to gear up, as Blaze had mentioned, and looking ahead to December, so you can get this on your schedule, the band and orchestra concert is on December 14th, and the choir concert is on December 19th. We'll talk more about that in December.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Silverood?
Good evening. Just a couple of things to share with you. We did get the AODA grant was funded from the federal government, which we were not sure was going to happen. Usually we get that notice months prior to now, and we just got it a couple of weeks ago, saying that we will be getting $15,000, and the focus of that grant is training staff in better practices on mental health. So a lot of that is going to be spent on teachers or other staff members attending the seven essential ingredients for trauma-informed schools. And also on... What's your elementary classroom, the one we always go to in Minneapolis?
Responsive classroom.
Responsive classroom. I was going to say restorative classroom, and I knew that wasn't right. Responsive classroom training for elementary staff teachers that haven't gone to that yet. Today, a summer school survey went out to parents so that we can get some information from them regarding what they are looking for in a summer school program and what they need in order for their children to attend summer school. So we're trying to get some input from the parents to see if we can get our enrollment up for summer school and see what we can do to help more kids become participants there. It's such a fun program. And like Kale said in his report, I've been meeting with high school staff. What has happened is, I met with them, their first go-around to look at ACT data. Those meetings were really, really good with the staff. They really enjoyed looking at the data. And then over the multi-district in-service, one of the presentations was from one of the, I call him a data guru from the state. He's worked for DPI, he works for CISA VI, he works in a lot of different areas, and one of his presentations was how to use the ACT data and how to better prepare your students. So we bought a couple of his resources, and from there, we are going through them with the, I'm going with them, through them with the staff, and talking about how can we make sure that we're preparing our students the best way we can for the ACT. And one of the things that the staff is doing is taking a miniature version of the ACT in their subject so they can see what it's like to take those problems and do them. Like you have 60 minutes to do 60 math problems. That's the real ACT. So they take it and they do 10 problems in 10 minutes, and they see how they do it. I did it today with our two, two of our three math teachers, and they finished those 10 problems in five minutes. So I have every confidence that they can teach these kids how to do the math. But it is, then we have a discussion about, are you, do you have test problems like this in your subject? And they said, no, they don't put those kinds of questions on their exams. Well, could we? Could we add these? Because we don't want to change our curriculum to be test prep. We still want it to be deep learning. But could we expand that deep learning to say, and sometimes questions look like this, instead of always looking like we do? So that's some of the work that we're doing, plus working on, how can we do like a review before the ACT, before we take that in February? So that's coming up quick. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brockert? Where are you? Where are you?
Over here. Thank you. Most people, when they think of me and my job, they think of, it's all about the finances and the dollars involved, the budget and all that. But I also have the pleasure of working very closely with the food service director, the technology director, the assistant maintenance director, and our transportation director. So with that role, I do meet with them monthly, just to keep myself apprised of what each director is doing and all the activities and projects that we have going on in the district. I think it's really important. So some examples are, with our food service program, our new director has started this year the Fuel Up to Play 60 program. And that's a national program that's with, supported by the Wisconsin Milk Marketing Board and the NFL, our very own Green Bay Packers are also supporting that program. And in October, she did, with part of this program, she made fresh fruit smoothies, and we received a blender bike from Fort, I believe it was from Fort Hospital, to use to make these smoothies. So it was a fun activity, fun way to... She's working with our rec program and our athletic director on this throughout the year, too, to get ideas for activities and to work together. So I just think that's a real neat initiative that she's participating in. In addition to that program, with the transportation director, with the new transportation director this year, there's been a lot of, you know, trying to get acclimated with the district for both him and myself, and one of the things, one of the projects he took on was updating the student transportation handbook. So it's a little more involved than the previous ones. I have attached it in our onboard docs for you to look at, but it, we do have it ready to go, and we'll be distributing it to students' families this week. So I just wanted you to know about that little project, so. Any other questions?
Thank you. Mrs. Strike?
First, I'd like to share a report from Melissa Brown, our Special Education Director and Assistant Principal at the middle school. Last month has provided a few different opportunities for learning about transition possibilities for our students with disabilities. On October 6th, Geraldine Rohr, and remember, she's our new transition teacher that's housed at Rock Lake Activity Center. So Geraldine and I attended a community conversation in the school district of Beloit in order to observe and plan for our community conversation that will happen in April. That will be a conversation where we invited businesses and partners throughout the Lake Mills community to talk about how our students could possibly be employed there in the future. On November 1st, I was able to attend an open house at Project Search. Project Search is a collaborative partnership between the Watertown Regional Medical Center, Watertown Unified School District, Bethesda Lutheran Communities, Long-Term Care Agencies, and the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. This program aims to help each student obtain employment upon graduation from high school through an innovative model that benefits the individual, workplace, and community. The program provides work-based learning opportunities for students with intellectual disabilities to prepare them for the world of work and competitive integrated employment. We have been invited to have our students who are in the transition program possibly attend that in their last year with us. This is comparable to the program that one of our students did with the Madison School District, working at UW Hospital last year. And on November 2nd, the Lake Mills DVR, that's Department of Vocational Rehabilitation Representative, came to talk with 10 special education staff as well as Mr. Vogel about what the DVR is and what they can do with students with disabilities age 14 and up. And then finally, tonight, I am attending, Looking Forward Options after High School at Madison College, and so she was able to attend that event tonight. Okay? So back to me. I, one of the things that we have on the agenda tonight is to do the second reading of the handbook to update with the middle manager section. I wanted to tell you that I was also asked to do two edits, and so I just wanted to let you know about those edits. Instrumental music in the co-curricular section is going to be changed to band, and string in the co-curricular section is going to be changed to orchestra. And that's just an edit, semantic, pointed out by the music department recently. I did talk to Ron Dayton about doing exit interviews for all of our staff who left during 1617, and he is more than willing to do that. We're going to, I think the letters are probably going to go out in the next day or two so we can get that project going. Then I wanted to remind you that the state convention, school board convention, is January 17th and 19th, and it's time to register for that. So if you'd like to go, Megan will help you do that. And the delegate assembly, and Rachel, you're our member for that, that is on Wednesday, January 17th at 1:30 PM. And then finally, it's time to start talking about school board elections in April. Both Dr. Donna Thomas and Ms. Rachel Davies, their terms will be ending in 2018. And so I've included the deadline for election, I'd like to go through that. Nomination papers for anyone interested in running for either one of those positions can, we can begin, you can begin circulating those on December 1st. Notification of non-candidacy, so if either of those two board members are not going to run next year, they need to let the district office know by December 22nd at 5:00 PM. Then there is a deadline for filing for candidacy, including registration statements and nomination papers. That's all due on January 2nd, 2018, at 5:00 PM. If there needs to be a primary, that would be held Tuesday, February 20th. And then the spring election is Tuesday, November 3rd.
April 3rd.
Excuse me, April 3rd. And those are three-year terms for our school board. And then one last thing that I wanted to mention is that during our staff development day, our multi-district day, Jamie kind of mentioned that, but we had 450 teachers here, teachers and administrators here from six different districts. This building was hopping. You know, we had excellent, excellent speakers, but to just bring that many professionals together to share in that learning was really impressive, and our custodial staff and our teaching staff and our food service staff really stepped up, and there's just so many positive comments from all the participating schools about what a welcoming and friendly and well-organized place this is, and it's because everybody pitched in and really helped. So I wanted to thank everyone for their help on that day. Okay?
All right, thank you. Moving along to action items. Approval of October 9th, regular Board of Education meeting. We can take, someone can take a shot at all these at one time. Approval of October 30th, Special Board of Education meeting. Approval of October 9th and October 30th Finance Committee meeting. And approval of October 18th Facilities Committee proceedings. I think we can take those all together.
Okay, well, I move approval of the October 9th, 2017 Regular Board of Education meeting, the October 30th, 2017 Special Board of Education meeting, the October 9th and October 30th, 2017 Finance Committee proceedings, and the October 18th, 2017 Facilities Committee proceedings.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion or comments? I'll just do a roll call on that, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of vouchers and invoices?
Just one on motion?
Yes, motion, please.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,477,476.37 for the month of October 2017.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of Treasury's report?
I move the board approve the Treasury's report for October 2017.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to approve the Treasury's report. Questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of 1718 Employee Handbook updates?
As I described to you last month, we came upon the fact that there was a section missing for middle managers, and so we have created that and shared that with you, and we discussed that last month, so if you have any questions, I can certainly help you with that. And then also, we wanted to bring the co-curricular schedule up to date, and we realized we were missing the middle school yearbook advisor, so that is an addition that would be added this time as well.
I'll move the board approve the updates of the 201718 Employee Handbook as presented at the October 30th, 2017 Special Board Meeting. Specifically, a section for middle managers, the inclusion of a $700 stipend for the middle school yearbook advisor.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approval of the 1718 Employee Handbook. Questions on that? The other additions to the orchestra and that?
Those are just edits, just changing.
Just edits?
Those are just edits, so I don't have to vote on those.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular letters of assignment?
We have filled out our coaching staff for winter sports, which is great since they're starting, and all the information is provided there for you.
I move the board approve the following co-curricular letters of assignment to Ms. Katie Burton for JV Girls Basketball Coach and Mr. Ted Brown for Varsity Wrestling Coach.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve the co-curricular letters of assignment. Questions on those? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff resignation?
We have a food service worker that would like to go south for the winter, so she has submitted her resignation, but we hope that she comes back in the spring.
I move the board approve the support staff resignation of Ms. Marie Putkamer as food service worker. Thank her for her service to the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Sorry.
All right, who's got it? Who's got the second? Okay.
We both do.
Got that? Any questions or comments on that? All right, roll call, please.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts?
This is a very expansive list of gifts this month, including lots of things to the drama department, so.
department, so good luck to whoever's reading all that.
Okay, who's gonna tackle this? Motion.
I move the board accept the following donations and thank the donors for their generous support of our students. A coach bus sponsored by the Bank of Lake Mills for the Lake Mills High School football team to travel to Lodi, valued at seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. A coach bus sponsored by the Lake Mills Market for the Lake Mills High School football team to travel to Union Grove, valued at seven hundred and fifty dollars. An anonymous donation of one hundred dollars to the elementary school backpack program. An anonymous donation of one hundred dollars to the middle school store. An anonymous donation of one hundred dollars to the high school food pantry, The Mill. A seated leg press machine and leg extension machine donated to the Lake Mills High School from Mr. and Mrs. Don Primmer with a value of six thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. A twenty-five hundred dollar donation to purchase a new communication system for the auditorium from the Lake Mills music parents. And Mr. Mike Allison of Sound Haven for his time in discounted sound equipment to the district. Mr. Allison has assisted us in emergency situations and had been very helpful in providing professional sound services on very short notice.
Keep going.
There we go. The following two thousand seventeen drama club donations of one hundred dollars from Ms. Allison Schmeizer, the Lake Mills Rotary Club, Dr. Richard and Karen Roots, and Mr. Stephen J. Fazel, DDS. The following two thousand seventeen drama club donations of one hundred and twenty-five dollars from Cape, the Lake Mills Veterinary Clinic, Remax Community Realty. The following two thousand seventeen drama club donation of a hundred and fifty dollars from the American Legion Auxiliary Unit Sixty-Seven. The following two thousand seventeen drama club donation of one hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Dental Associates of Lake Mills and from Lou's Homes. The following two thousand seventeen drama club donations of two hundred dollars from Terry and Pam Strike and Ms. Susan Buckholz.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in seconded to approve the gifts, the generous gifts this month. Any questions on those? We thank everybody again for those generous gifts. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Temprio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Upcoming board adjournments for December.
Just a reminder that we have that meeting next Monday, which is actually a work session that'll be based on facilities. Then, when we meet on December eleventh, we'll have the athletic director's report for the year. Hopefully, we're gonna have summer school dates and proposed, any proposed changes or updates that comes out of this survey. Possibly, we'll have our building and grounds director position ready for approval. Also, there'll be a food service worker. We've also posted for a new position in the rec department, but that will, based on those posting dates, that will not be ready for approval in December eleventh.
And the special board meeting begins at, again?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
And representatives from Myron and EUA will be here.
Anything else, any other additional?
I can move adjournment.
Can you?
Second.
Good, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? We adjourn. Thank you all.